Good morning. Happy Monday. It's nice to see you all in this Monday morning. A little outside of the norm, huh? We appreciate everyone's flexibility. I am excited about our agenda today. We have lots of good stuff. And I'm going to have Jess and Seth come up first and give us an update on the Health Center. The saga of Alderwood.
Good morning. It's nice to see you all this morning. Happy Monday. We've got a couple updates. As Rita said, it's an exciting, ongoing saga when we talk about opening Alderwood. But on Saturday, we did celebrate a month of at least half of our residents in the Health Center living in Alderwood on the third floor. So that's how I'll start. We've had a great first 30 days for 23 individuals that live on the third floor. It's beautiful. Our second floor remains vacant outside of a couple occupied workspaces for our Director of Nursing, our Assistant Director of Nursing. And we've got 26 that are currently residing in our old Health Center waiting for our Life Safety Code Plan of Correction, which was submitted on the 30th of August. And we're still waiting for a full approval. We've had an inspector in recently who still takes issue with a couple outstanding items, of which we have a third-party contract for our fire dampers specifically to be inspected tomorrow. So I'm very hopeful that tomorrow will be one of our last pieces. We'll get that inspection resubmitted, and it will be very, very soon thereafter that we get a full approval. So Alderwood is still in process. Like I said, our Health Center remains still occupied by 26 people today. And we are so excited to get the green light to move those individuals over as our third floor is going very well. People are excited to be in that space. The temperature control is a complete game changer. I didn't know I would. It would be so noticeable, but going between the two facilities, it absolutely is. And so just some really great things happening, but still in process. My second bullet here, COVID update. We are in an active outbreak with Waterford Place. Now, what that means is that there was a positively testing associate on September 9th. And we haven't had any subsequently identified cases. But that puts you into an active outbreak because one singly new identified case means that you have to go 14 consecutive days of testing without finding any other subsequent cases. So I'm very hopeful today is a testing day. Thursday is a testing day. We test twice a week on this campus. We've tested residents twice. We've had no subsequently identified cases. Thursday will be our 14th day. And I am very hopeful to say we will make the recommendation to our medical director to discontinue outbreak status on the 23rd, Thursday of this week. So I'll keep you posted on that. And then we like to finish strong. We have three new staff introductions to make. Three really big rock stars that we're welcoming to our team. Katie Walters is our new RN, Assistant Director of Nursing. She's about at the two-month mark here. So she came in the middle of July. And she spent now about 60 days with us. She's doing great. Really acclimating on the team. She comes from a Director of Nursing role in a standalone assisted living in Marysville. She has hospice nursing and case management in her background. But a strong RN in that role. Really excited to have her. And Tammy Mitchell just joined our team in early August. So she's about at 30 days. She's an RN, MDS Coordinator. So this is our resident assessment nurse. So as you know, in a licensed nursing home setting, we receive governmental assistance and reimbursement from the Centers of Medicare and Medicaid. And that has a whole plethora of requirements in terms of resident ongoing assessments and submissions through a federal portal that then releases money for payment from Medicare and Medicaid services. And so Tammy is our champion coming with many, many years of experience in that role. A very strategic player of our team. So we're excited to welcome Tammy. Rebecca? I'm sorry. The question is, what does MDS stand for? And that is Minimum Data Set. And I know that that doesn't mean much more to you either. That's probably why we just say MDS and hope no one raises their hand. I'm sorry, Pat? She's a resident assessment nurse. So it does fall under the category of care because she has face-to-face direct contact. But she assesses she's not delivering care. Rebecca Smith is our newest addition. She's an RN clinical liaison. So she works alongside of our navigator and our admissions team, our transitions team on the campus, and our risk team on the campus. She is largely, outside of COVID, would be out at the hospital and at bedside with those that are transitioning levels of care and may be in an acute setting looking to come back and transition to care on our campus. Rebecca's first day is today. So we're really excited. She's coming from about eight years working at doctors' hospital in the discharge department. So she's been on the other side of transition. And we're really, really excited to have her here. And little-known fact, in the early 90s, she worked on our campus in our activities department. So she, in her interview, said she'd like to come home. And we always welcome people back. So really excited to have her. Thank you.
Thanks, Jess. All right, Angela Vogon. There she is. She's running. Here she is.
Literally sprinting. Good morning. How are we doing? So I'm going to give you an update on some of these other items first. And then I'll go and I'll introduce our Associate of the Month. So first, I think we just want to let you know what's going on with our payroll transition. So right now, obviously, we've incurred that particular task into our team. And we're doing some shifting around at the same time knowing that we are preparing for a brand-new system. So that's a huge undertaking. That means every bit of data in our system that we've paid people for the last seven to 10 years, we have to now figure out how to take out of one system and put into the other. So it's a large goal for me and my team. So if you pray, say a little prayer. We're going to need it. And also check on us by December to make sure that we're still okay. But we're just starting that. And so we got our very long list of things and items that we're going to be working towards. And it's a big feat. So we will be keeping you updated how that's going. Staffing shortages, so hand in hand. I actually think I can say something great about this. So we, in the past month, especially in culinary, have seen an uptick in applications, which is good. There's still significant openings. We have about 28 openings across the campus, a lot of them being in our Health Center for right now. It's just an area in which there's been a lot of burnout, caregiver burnout over the last year. And so we're seeing a lot of people that have struggled through that transition. And we're working really hard internally to find new ways to support our team to keep them so that they feel like, hey, this is the right decision. I want to be in this environment, and I want to stay here. But on the culinary side, having a little bit of an uptick. I know that you all have been anxiously awaiting what position or stance that our board would be taking on our vaccine requirement. And so we are working on our policy right now. It is going to be in conjunction with our flu shot policy, which is a requirement to work at FED. So obviously, we still allow for those to have medical and religious exemptions. And they have to come through us to get those approved. But by November 30th, I believe, that will also be a requirement here for associates at FED. And then I have a very special announcement. So I think you guys remember when we recognized another member of our community that had 30 years of service. But we want to bring up yet another. So Robin, if you'll join us. Robin has been with Friendship Village of Dublin for 30 years this year. And so I think that this is a wonderful point of recognition. She is our central supply coordinator. And so, my gosh, 30 years. I mean, can you tell us your story? How you started, where you ended, where you are now?
Well, a friend of mine worked here. And at the time, it was just housekeeping. But... And I came out here to work. And I started in ESS. And I went and worked in our AIL department. And I've just been here. I've loved it. I've made a lot of good friends with the residents and the employees. I just, it's been a good, it's been a good 30 years for me. I've learned a lot from everybody. So thank you.
Thank you, Robin, for your 30 years of service. I'm going to come find you today. Our culinary team has prepared her a lovely dinner to take home. So it'll be nice and put together fancy. So we're so grateful for all your years of service, Robin. And then our next, I think I saw Todd around here somewhere, maybe? Did he leave already? No, he's there. Todd Shipley is our Associate of the Month for September. But I don't see him. Or is he hiding in the back? I know. Where is he? Well, he might be busy or have maybe got back from an appointment later. I'm not so sure. But we'll find him for the next Town Hall if he maybe got stuck. But he is our September Associate of the Month. Todd actually has been nominated and gotten an honorable mention, I think, three times already this year. So when the team and I met, we got a card for him this time. And we were like, that's it? It's Todd. It has to be Todd. He's worked so hard. So we're so grateful for him. And again, I'll have to hunt him down. He must have gotten caught on a transportation. And then our honorable mentions are Steve Farah, also in security, Patrick, I can't say his last name, Abrazizi, and then Callie DeBenedetto in Home Care Services. So congratulations to them all.
Thank you, Angela. All right. So who knows if we're going to, the FDA is going to approve the booster this week? Sure they are. So we're going to give you some information on the booster that we have planned for Friday. And one of the reasons that we have not been uber-communicative is because we don't know what the status is of this booster. So if you've been following along, you know the CDC says yay, and the FDA says no. And so that obviously is going to impact what we do. So Lee has been working tirelessly. And Lee deserves like a standing ovation for putting together the flu clinic last week. She did that by herself because we were all working on other things. So if we could just give her a round of applause for the incredible work she did on that. Yes, we agree. And she is also the coordinator. Who knew when she started as the Communications and Marketing Director, she was also going to be the booster in flu clinic guru helping us with our clinic this week? So Lee deserves a lot of extra hugs and thanks for the work that she's done. So thank you.
All right. Good morning, everyone. So you've all been through the clinic a couple of times now. So I think we've kind of got it down. And I thank everybody for understanding their times and how this all works and being patient with us as we move through all of these fun-filled shot clinics. So just as everyone, as we go through. So for Friday's clinic, it's going to run very similar to the last three. So if you've done this once, or twice, or three times, it's going to be very similar. We do ask that you bring your insurance cards because the COVID shot is different than the flu shot. And so we're going to have to review all of the insurance cards. So just be a little patient with us on that. There will be a 15-minute wait after this shot, just like the first COVID shots. So it's going to take a little bit more time than it did for the flu shots. We're not going to, you're not going to be flying through here like we did with the flu shot, which was great. So that will be in the legacy dining room, just like we did in January. So also, that means that the legacy dining room will be closed for lunch on Friday. So you'll be able to pick up a to-go lunch when you get your COVID shot. Just so everybody's aware of that. Be a little bit more time sitting in the legacy dining room just to make sure that there's no adverse reactions. We didn't see any the first times. So we don't expect any this time. Also, from what we hear, the third shot, if you had any reactions or the next day you felt yucky, that was me, you will probably have that same reaction again to this third shot. So just so everybody's aware that it's just going, you may just feel a little bit yucky on Saturday. So other than that, if you have any requests or you have an appointment or something on Friday, please, if you could get that to us today, that way, when we do get this information, we can put out the times and make sure that everybody can be accommodated for their time. So appreciate all of your help and everybody on the team's help and all the door knockers and wheelchair pushers and everybody else that's made this very simple for us. And so we can make this very quick and easy on Friday. Because who knew that a flu shot clinic and a shot clinic would be fun? Which they kind of are. We get to see all of your faces, which is, we always love that. And it was making it very easy for us. So thank you very much.
Lee, what happens if I have lost my vaccine card?
If you have lost your vaccine card, you can reach out to Walgreens. They have copies of all of your vaccine information. So they can do a replacement card. You can also reach out to the ODH, Ohio Department of Health. They also can help you with that. And we can probably help you because we also kept records of all of your cards as well. So but it'd be really, 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 really great if you could all bring your vaccine card with you. Yes, Pat? Yes. We will only be doing Pfizer at this time. So if you did get a shot somewhere else and it was Moderna or J&amp;J, you will not be included in this booster shot clinic this week. So it is only for Pfizer people. Any other questions? All right. Well, then we'll see you on Friday.
So we have a meeting at 11 o'clock with COPC, which will help to determine what we're going to do on Friday. So I think, Lee, the plan is to send out information today or tomorrow based on what we hear. So we know it's a quick turnaround. But as Lee said, it'll be just like the flu clinic and/or the clinics that we had way back in January, if anybody can remember those. And then we don't want you to have any PTSD with your styrofoam container that's going to be handed to you for lunch on Friday. So just everybody breathe. It'll be okay. All right. Next, I want to have Emily come up and talk a little bit about sales.
Good morning. Don't have a tremendous amount to tell you today other than we're excited because we still have move-ins coming in, which is great. We, as you know, John and Nancy Koos moved into A366. Bill and Marie, yes, in August. And then Bill and Marie King moved into A466 already. And then upcoming in late September, we have another couple moving into A367, Dale and Pam Inkley. So please help us in welcoming them when they get here. We do have two other move-ins coming in October, Hyatt Sims and the Wells, Joyce Wells. So we'll be giving you more information as we have on those. And then we have four more people in paperwork. So again, staying very, very busy and going forward with just talking to people and telling them about the community and getting people in the door. Also, wanted to thank everybody who attended the ice cream social earlier this month. It went really, really well. It was kind of fun to see all of you who were like, oh, my gosh, I haven't had a dreamsicle or an ice cream sandwich in so long. So we were happy to provide those to you. And we want to thank those of you who brought the referrals to us. We were able to get a few from you, which is always very helpful. And continue to please bring those to us as you have them. On your agenda, it talks about the resident referral lunch. That is still obviously something that's kind of on the back burner with not allowing guests into the building. But our next one is slated for November. So if we should be able to let people in, that will happen. But if not, we'll probably come with something else creative, like the ice cream social, just to thank you for your referrals and to see if you have any others. Does anyone have any questions for sales and marketing? Okay, thank you.
All right. Now, Mr. Andy. Andy's going to give you some good news related to COVID and some good news related to the seven-year refurb. And we're going to have a little fun together, right, Andy? Yeah, just push the button.
Good morning, everyone. So next slide, please. We'll go start with the, there we go. Seven-year refurb. I've had, since I've been in this position, I've had numerous questions about our refurbishment. And the seven-year refurb, for those of you who don't know or those of you who have asked, is we come in after you've lived here for seven years and we can replace your carpet and we can repaint your walls. There are other availabilities, modifications beyond our standard paint and carpet that would be at your expense. And what I really want to stress is the difficulties. I think Angela touched on this. Maybe each time we have Town Hall and other discussions beyond Town Hall is our COVID situation of staffing, supplies, and contractor shortages are making it difficult to... It is compromising our predictability, which is making it difficult for us to move forward on some things and making it difficult to complete. So I guess ultimately, my request, maybe all of our requests for many of the things we do is to please be patient with us. We are assessing and trying to remedy some of these situations. But COVID has made things a little uncertain and unpredictable at times. So any questions? Pat?
You said you're going to do October yearly cleanings. Are you still going to do that?
Yep. That's for Seth. Okay. Yeah. When I talk about uncertainty and anxiety, which I have a little bit of both at the moment, out of 10 people that report to me, I have three here right now. And three of them are working in landscape because of either positive tests, direct exposure, indirect exposure, somebody at home who's tested positive. I'm at 30%. On the refurbishment side, I'm at 0% staffing. So it's a little bit difficult. So I'm going to be playing a little catch-up here in the future. So thank you so much. Good to see you guys.
Testing? All right. Good morning, everyone. So Pat, I'll answer your question at the end here. But I know we're sticking with the theme here with staffing shortages. I like numbers, if you do not know that about me. So in my spare time, I pulled some numbers on Friday to make the slide for us all here. So this is for our ESS department. Since July 1st, which was the start of our new fiscal year, so I looked at our payroll data, kind of combed through it. And this is what I came up with. So we've been down an average of five and a half full-time equivalents. So what's a full-time equivalent? That is 2,080 hours worked in a year. So 40 hours a week. Or 27.5% of our ESS hourly associates. So that's our housekeepers. Those are our janitors, our housepersons. And also, we've been absent a floor tech. So why did I pull that together? I think it's just good to look at the actual numbers to say, you know, this is kind of our challenge. And it's been before July, or July 1st. And how we're really having to pull it together really to meet basic service-level needs. So Pat had asked if we're going to do our deep clean month in October. We are not, really, based on those numbers. And it actually came up about two or three months ago. And we have a monthly ESS department. And I'm a firm believer that a good leader listens. And my team basically said, we can't do that. And as much as we hate disappointing you all, I have to listen and listen to my team. So the good news is, as we, I know Angela mentioned it, we are starting to see an uptick in applications here in the last few weeks. So very hopeful we can continue to set up interviews, having those interviews show up, meeting the right people, hiring the right people, and then bringing them on board. So we are seeing some positive trends with that. We did hire a floor tech. His name's John Pierre. So he trained last week on day shift. And this week, he'll move to his afternoon-evening shift. So he'll work 2:00 to 10:30. So if you see John in the hallways, say hi to him. He brings some great experience. We're excited to have him on our team. And last, last week was ESS Appreciation Week. So we did a bunch of fun stuff for our team, had food for them, appreciated them for all their efforts, even working a little short as the numbers show. And again, thank you all for your patience and flexibility. I know Pam, Brian, and William appreciate that. So Pat? What does the floor tech do? So that position is an off-hour position by design because they are really charged with keeping a schedule, running our Radius Machine, which is our big cordless sweeper, doing floor care on the off-hours of all of our common areas, our hallways, things of that nature. So William Stone is one of our supervisors. He did a really great job in that role, was since promoted. And we have really been absent that position since he was promoted. So it's good to have him, John, on board. And you'll see him kind of on a coordinated schedule taking care of all of our common area spaces and floor care program. All right. Well, thank you all.
I found one that works, too. I just want to say that, you know, when you all moved in, you signed a residency agreement that basically said, our promise is to you and your promise is to us. And one of those promises was that we would do housekeeping twice a month for all of you. And so we are working feverishly to maintain that because we know how important that a promise is to all of you. We talk a little bit about the staffing shortage just so you're understanding and appreciative of some of the things. We are working very hard to shelter you from some of the challenges that we're feeling in the culinary department, in the ESS department, in the Health Center. I mean, the Health Center, for the first time in five years, eight years, is now using outside agency because we just can't get people to work. And our staff is working hours. I mean, I think in the last time, we had how many hours of overtime in the last pay period in the Health Center? 130, 140 hours of overtime? Jess is saying higher than that. And what we're, what we're now worried about is that our awesome team members are just burnt to a crisp. is that our awesome team members are just burnt to a crisp. And they've been working so hard for so long to try and maintain the standards that we all expect and you all expect. And unfortunately, that's not just here at Friendship Village. We're experiencing this across the country. I heard this weekend that Nationwide Children's, they have no more ventilators. They're sending their kids to Grant to be, to be intubated because they have multiple units that are closed because of staffing. So, you know, we're, we're working very hard. We're gonna need to pull together and be extra appreciative and be very, very understanding, all of us. I know we're all very tired of this. And hopefully it'll change shortly. But in the meantime, we're gonna give you your booster, hopefully, this week and try and keep you safe and healthy. And Jeannie's gonna help us with having a little fun.
Good morning. Hey, before, before I get started on the things that I wanna share with you today, I did want to announce that our air compressor for our Kaiser strength equipment is being delivered tomorrow between 8:00 and noon. That's what they're telling us. So I'm really sorry for the inconvenience. The good news is that that air compressor has lasted us 16 years. So that's, that's good news. So hopefully this next one will as well. We'll get that up and running and hopefully by Wednesday, we'll, we'll be ready to go. So are you ready for a little fun? Yes. Yay. I have to tell you really quick, I was thinking about fun. And so over the years here at Friendship Village, my husband would say to me, "So honey, are you going to play in the pool today? Oh honey, do you have a party today? Are you gonna do a dance class today?" And, "Yes, yes and yes." And I'm having a great time, you're just jealous. So obviously, a little more goes into it, but I have lots of fun and we, we try to provide a lot of fun opportunities for you. So, Active Aging Week, which I can't believe I'm even talking about this. It seems like it was yesterday that we were celebrating the cities of, of Ohio. But this, this year's theme is Back in the Saddle. Active Aging Week is gonna be the week of October 4th through the 8th. So if you remember in the past, we always celebrated it that last week of September. And a couple of years ago, the council decided to move it to the first week of October in conjunction with Older Americans Week. So we went ahead and changed it. And so I wanna kinda give you an outline of the agenda for the week. So on Monday, October 4th, at 10:00 a.m., we'll be doing our opening ceremony here in the Muirfield Room. And some of these pictures are just little clues of things that we are going to do during our opening ceremony, but I like to save some surprises. So I'm not gonna tell you all that's happening, but that will happen here in the Muirfield Room. At 1:00, we will have a lifelong learning presentation by Mark Camden on Native American flutes. And at 7:00 that evening, we'll be showing a movie in here in the Muirfield Room, Blazing Saddles. So on Tuesday, October 5th, 8:00 a.m., we are going to have a cowboy breakfast. Probably not the healthiest breakfast you've ever had, but it'll be good, in the Legacy Dining Room. At 10:00 a.m., we are having cowboy church. So that's gonna be featuring our cowboy chaplain, Ken Delman, and Barefoot McCoy. So if you've seen Barefoot McCoy, you know how wonderful he is. He's gonna be providing some music with the harmonica and guitar. We're gonna do that in the Celine Garden. I think you're gonna wanna see that. That's gonna be a lot of fun. At 1:00, we have two mini therapy horses that are gonna be visiting the campus at the main entrance. And at 5:00, we're gonna do a wiener roast. We're gonna have a horse-drawn wagonette that you can take some rides throughout the campus. And we will have music as well, and that'll be outside the main entrance. On Wednesday, 10:00, we are going to have a Wild West Street Festival. So we have several things lined up for the festival as well. And there will be music at that also. At 1:00, the Country Music Hall of Fame. If you were here, I think it's four or five years ago, four years ago, we had, as part of Lifelong Learning, the Country Music Hall of Fame. We did a teleconference. And those that attended produced a song with the help of the Country Music Hall of Fame. It is the most beautiful song. Every time I hear it and you sing it, usually at the last day of Active Aging, it always makes me cry. But we're gonna come up with another song. So that's gonna be really fun. I'm looking forward to that. At 3:00, we're gonna do some whiskey tasting in the Legacy Dining Room. We're gonna have different types of whiskeys, whiskey drinks, maybe some bourbon balls, and that's gonna be headed by our own Tim Clunk. And on Thursday, October 7th, 9:00, Learn the Line Dance. Come on in here in the Muirfield Room and I'm gonna be teaching some line dancing. We've been doing that on Tuesday and Thursday and having a lot of fun with that. Very easy to learn. So guys, come, come along as well. 1:00, our own John Fellingham is gonna do a lasso demonstration out on the Legacy Patio and provide also some opportunities for you to try it. And at 5:00, we are gonna have a brisket dinner and square dance. So Culinary is purchasing a smoker. We're gonna smoke that, not we, they are gonna smoke that brisket. And we're gonna have a great meal that evening and square dancing in here in the Muirfield Room. And then on Friday is our closing ceremony at 10:00. That will end our Active Aging Week. And we have several things, again, lined up for our closing ceremony. So I'm really hoping that you can join us. For those residents that are new, have not participated in an Active Aging Week, this is an opportunity for us to celebrate and educate our nine dimensions of wellness. So I'm hoping that you will join us. Other events scheduled for that week will be canceled. Our fitness classes, art classes will not happen that week because we want you to all come in and participate in Active Aging. So I am super excited. Oh, actually, before I get to that, I did want you to know that starting in October, it starts our second quarterly theme. So we thought we would play on Back in the Saddle and our second quarterly theme is gonna be Back in the Saddle Again. So we'll be continuing some Western theming as we continue throughout this year. So now I'm super excited to welcome Stacy Bass. Stacy, come on up. Stacy is our new community life coordinator and we're super happy that he is joining our team. Some of you may recognize Stacy. He has been one of our art consultants doing ceramics, ceramics and photography. So Stacy, you wanna say a few words?
Sure. I'm Stacy. Some of you guys may have met me before. I've been teaching here on and off for about three years. I'm really excited to be helping you guys out with the myriad of experiences that I've had and to help you guys out with technology. A little bit about myself, I live in Grove City, Ohio. I'm from the Midwest. So I have been a, as an artist, if anybody is an artist here, I've worn many hats in my life. So I have been a photographer and an educator for about 12 years. I've lived in Japan. I teach photography and ceramics and drawing and technology. So I'm looking forward to bringing back TED Talks. In terms of personal interests, I love cooking. I have six cats. Yes. Yeah. Let's see. That's, that's exactly why. More to come. So outside of that, I love cooking. And very recently, I am learning how to brew my own beer. So I have a lot on my plate and I just bottled this weekend and I'm really looking forward to seeing either how wonderful the beer is or how terrible it is. So, but I'm really looking forward to being here.
Thank you, Stacy. A round of applause for Stacy. Thank you all. Hope to see you at Active Aging.
Thanks, Jeannie. Who's excited? Jeannie and her team do such a great job with Active Aging Week and it's always a, a good time. So if you have your cowboy hat, you better dust it off or if you don't have one, Amazon has them. Danielle, I don't know if you all know Danielle. Danielle is the, a mastermind of lots of things. And so she helps me manage life, thankfully. And so she's kind of the, the person behind, what's the Wizard of Oz? The curtain behind, the person behind the curtain. And I just wanted her to have an opportunity to talk to all of you about what she does for our community and our board to keep things running. So.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Danielle Williams and I am the Administration Director here at Friendship Village of Dublin. And I've had quite a few people come up to me pretty recently and say, "Hey, I've seen you around, but I don't know who you are or what you do." So I just wanted to introduce myself since I started back in November 2020 and it was really kind of the heat of COVID and I know we were doing digital town halls. So I didn't get to come before everyone so that you could meet me in person and, you know, put a name to it in the face. So that's what I'm doing here. So as for my role as the Administration Director, I have two large areas that's kinda split between. Number one is Rita. So I am Rita's executive assistant. I do her calendar and email management. And what that entails is a lot of caller coding. So I do scan through her emails and I'll caller code them. I'll mark them if they're extra important and need an immediate response. Caller code them based on category so she knows if it's an associate or resident, Bridge Park, construction. Just make it so it's really easy. So as soon as she gets a free moment, she can look through and then respond to those emails quickly. As for calendar management, I schedule a lot of the meetings on her calendar. And if you'd like to meet with her, you would reach out to me and I would get that scheduled as well. I like to joke, it's kinda like playing Counter Tetris because there's not very much open time on her calendar. So definitely do a lot to, to keep that running and, and going smoothly. Other things I do are the communications database management. So those weekly communications that you get on Wednesdays and Saturdays, I send them out through our MailChimp system. So if you're ever having an issue and you're not getting the email for any reason, please make sure to reach out to me so that I can assist with that. And then just kind of other things with my role for Rita, special projects, timelines, org charts, presentations, pretty much anything and everything, I'm happy to help with. So the second area of my job is assisting with the board. So what I do is I make sure I maintain all the documents and the files and keep them up to date, make sure we have annual updates and that they're easy to find for the board members. So right now, we're using a system called Director's Desk, but we've been having some issues with that. So I made a brand-new SharePoint site, moved all of our files over there, reorganized them, and then made it so we're going to launch that this January and switch to that instead so that all the board members can easily see our information and not have issues with it. So really excited about that. And then the last thing for the board is minutes. It's a huge part of my job. So I attend many of the meetings. It can be normally eight to 10 hours a month and then write the minutes for it. So keeps me busy. And of course, if you ever wanna meet with me, my desk is right outside Rita's office. Please feel free to stop by and say hi. Nice to meet you guys.
Thank you, Danielle. Danielle's a whiz. Keeps everyone organized. Corinne's gonna absolutely kill me for this, but Corinne, will you come up and just stand here for me, please? Did you see her face, everyone? I know. So you all got my communication a couple of weeks ago that Corinne is going to go and be a grandma and leave us. But I just wanted to thank Corinne so much. I think this, last year has been incredibly hard. But Corinne has done insanely amazing job taking care of our independent living residents and we just wanna recognize you for that. So thank you. So be Corinne's last town hall, right?
Yes.
We hope that she will.
I'll miss it very much. Sure, I do. I wasn't expecting this, so I don't have anything rehearsed. But I told Rita and my colleagues, this is probably one of the most difficult decisions I've ever made because I just, I love my work here, I love all of you. And I thought back on the last 14 years, it's really, it's a wonderful organization, wonderful leadership, but it's really the relationships that we've all had with one another. That's what's really long-lasting. So I really thank you for that. I'll miss all of you. Rita's a wonderful leader and you have a wonderful leadership team. And I, I know everybody's gonna be just great. And sometimes change is, can be good, as you all know. So thank you for everything and I hope someday I can come back and see all of you, maybe volunteer even. That sounds like fun, but anyway, thank you.
Corinne, I think Pat wants to say something. When you come back, bring pictures. Corinne has made a huge impact on all of us and our home care team. And so we are, we are being very thoughtful about how we want to restructure the home care department. It is, I think currently she serves, her and her team serve about 100 residents on a daily basis, a weekly basis. And that is incredible. So 100 people are impacted by the services of home care and Corinne's leadership. So as we walk, work through these next couple of weeks, we have a couple of ideas. It's just gonna take a little time to pull it all together. Obviously, you've heard today that recruiting is not the easiest thing. So we are going to try and look internally to see if there are some options that will help us fill the hole that Corinne has. We are very, very, very happy for Corinne, as I say to her, but very sad for us. So we will work, continually work to try and find that. But I don't have an answer for you right now as to what we're going to do. We are working on it. Angela, Seth, Jess, Corinne, and I will be having a meeting sometime this week to kind of pull together the pieces. In addition to Corinne leaving, we're also converting all of her billing and all of her documentation into Point Click Care so we have everything in one platform. So there's a lot of balls in the air and we'll, we'll figure it out. We always do. But certainly Corinne is incredible and we'll miss her and very appreciative for the work that she's done here at Friendship Village. So thank you, Corinne. Okay, what questions do we have today? Yes, Barb? Do we have an update on the TV situation? Tom, Craig, you wanna do that? They're both jumping up here to tell you the good news. You tried, buddy, you tried.
I have to edit these videos and I always try to pull myself out. So we had our first meeting with Spectrum yesterday, or not yesterday, Friday. And what they're doing now is locating the fiber within the building for their signal. And they're gonna be back this week to start clarifying where they wanna start. We, of course, are pushing them to start in A-Wing North since the ceilings are already down. Thought that would be a great place to start so they could run their COAX. But that's really the update. All of the, all of the approvals that needed to happen on Spectrum's side after we signed the contract have been done. And so their construction teams are now working with us to get everything started.
Thanks. And we're still looking for first quarter of 2022 for conversion, correct? Do you like how we did that, first quarter of 2022? What other questions do we have? Yes, Smiths? So the question is, what, what does Robin exactly do here at Friendship Village of Dublin?
Well, as Robin told you, she's kind of a jack-of-all-trades because she's worked in multiple departments in her 30 years here. But her current role, she's worked in for about five now, in central supply coordination and, and medical records support. So she does all of the ordering for supplies. Everything from the little medicine cups, the little plastic cups and the spoons that help with our medication administration pass in the Health Center, the Waterford, the Alderwood. And then she also buys things like Ensure, incontinence supplies, things that would help adaptations in the apartment. So the air mattresses and the grab bars. So really all things, supplies, extras that we put into our service areas and our residences to help the whole thing go. So she does ordering. That's a big one.
Yes, Pat? Carefully. The question is, how do you staff two health centers? It's been a challenge. And I don't know if you remember, we had COVID in the middle of this, so we staffed three of them. It's a challenge and I think all of us are very eager to get Alderwood open because we have a nurse on the third floor. We have a nurse, I think two nurses on the third floor, one nurse in the old health center. And I think everyone is very eager to get into the new health center. Even this morning, we had an email from a family member saying, "What's going on? How are we doing this?" So it has been a challenge. We, I think when the surveyors were here last week and they, they rightfully are doing their job, but to the point that it's almost detrimental. And so, but you can't fight City Hall on these things. You just have to say, "Okay." And I think we all were ready to do some things to his tires, but that's fine. So hopefully this week, we'll be able to, to get that. Literally, I think as soon as we get approval, we'll move people over. Even if that's on a Friday and we're not gonna get approval on the weekends, but as soon as we get approval, we'll move people over. We were very hopeful to be able to do it last week, but obviously that didn't happen. Yes? Yes, Mitch?
I'm correct that we are replacing the heating units in the Legacy Dining Room.
Oh, the steam table, the steam table. Yeah, I was like, heating units? I don't think so, but, okay. So the heating, the steam tables in the Legacy Dining Room, so yes. So if you all remember, when we were in this room, we had a steam table back, actually, kind of where Mitch and Mary are sitting. So that steam table was, presented challenges. And so when we went to the new Legacy Dining Room, we put an induction system on the buffet. So you'll have your salads, your cold area, and then your warm area was induction. We've obviously struggled with the temperature of food in that induction. We bought new pans, we put lights up, we've done all of these things. And ultimately, Matt came in and said, "Let's just get some steam tables." So the steam tables have been ordered, they are here, it's just now the labor to get the electric and the cutouts done. Angie McKeever, do you have an update on where and when that may be for the steam tables?
Actually, that's a meeting to play for either Andy or Andy.
Andy's working on that. So I know that the last time we were talking, it has to do with, we have to get the granite, there we are, steam tables.
This Friday.
This Friday. Yay. So we, they're going to start working in the morning. I think that's going to be a challenge. They're going to drape it off because they have to use a wet saw to cut the granite to get the steam tables to fit into where the induction spaces are. So it sounds like Friday, so maybe Monday or Tuesday operational for the steam tables. That was a very long-winded answer of yes, steam tables. Thank you. Any, Barb, I'll come to you. Any other questions? Okay. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Tinker.
We put out the fact that we, I think it's important to clarify it for Pfizer because we had folks in Florida last year who didn't have Pfizer.
Very good point. So we'll clarify that it's for Pfizer only. I think I've spoken to most of those people, so they should be understanding, but we'll clarify that it's just for Pfizer only for the Booster Clinic, if and when we have it on Friday. Pat?
The gardens were out of the, are out of the world Monday, walking below the top. Most beautiful place. You come in, it's a vast garden.
Let me repeat that. So the gardens are absolutely lovely. Andy's standing back here, and I think Andy deserves a special round of applause because you heard the staffing challenges he's having. Gardens are lovely, Andy.
And then, could you ever come out here on Monday, Sunday?
Yes, the north quarters. I noticed that we were up there. So the north quarters, the date is the end of November. They're moving along pretty nicely, I think, all things considered. Steve is back here. He's going to give me a thumbs up or a thumbs down. The drywall, but I believe they're working on the drywall this week around the arches. And the ceiling grids, hopefully, are the goals to get the ceiling grids in this week. Once the ceiling grids go in, then the electric can go in for the can lights, and then the inspector can come out. And so they'll obviously start on the fifth floor going down. So we still have probably two months. The FFNE is a whole nother story. Turns out, there's a foam shortage from the, remember last winter when Texas had that really bad snowstorm and all the heat went out and all of that? So it turns out, there's a foam shortage as it relates to that. So the FFNE is probably not going to be here in this calendar year. It's probably going to be in January, but I think we're looking at the hallways being done end of November, early December. FFNE is your fixtures, so your couches, your artwork, things like that. The artwork probably will go up. It's the couches and things like that that will be delayed. They will be sanding more. So that is sadly part of construction that comes with it. They're going to paint in the near future, they'll go back, they'll retouch things up, things like that. But the next projects are the ceiling grids and the ceilings. So the question is, are we allowed to have family members in the Legacy? And the answer is no. And the reason for that is because we are very, very much encouraging everybody to wear a mask. The positivity rate in Franklin County is over 10%. So while we are trying to maintain our operations, you've all been vaccinated, close to 80% of our associates are vaccinated, we still really believe that the masks should be worn at all times. When you're in the dining room, that's the biggest area of concern because you're sitting not six feet apart, you're sitting closer to each other, and you don't have your mask on. So your layers of Swiss cheese have kind of opened up a little bit. So we are not allowing outside guests to eat in the dining room. You can eat outside if that's something that you would choose, so the Courtyard, the Rivers Edge area, the Bistro area, those types of things. There was, yes, Mitch?
I appreciate you, I took you on Tuesday and Thursday for 10 to 12 with a new laptop. I'm saving my household.
I don't know if I'm going to be able to repeat that so everyone can hear it, but that was very cute. So Mitch is thanking Tom and his team for the IT work. They have a new IT, or they have a new laptop in their household, and Tom and his team are saving lots of expletives and of a household harmony. Yes. Yay. Bill's thanking that. It was cute. I needed that laugh. Thank you. What other questions do we have? All right. Well, are we so excited about Active Aging Week in about two weeks? Yes, it'll be very, very fun. You should mark it on your calendars. It's a great time, and I appreciate everyone's help today, and it was great to see you on a Monday. Thanks for your flexibility with Town Hall today. Thank you.